People, when I looked at the spreadsheet, almost even split between men and women. Uh, in the criminal justice system that are working with the rise program right now. And it is a bit confusing because there's so many different uh. Sober living centers and programs now. Uh, in southern Indiana, uh, which is good. There's a lot of alternatives. Uh, but it's not like it used to be when, when you know that you've got these five folks who are at the lighthouse and you can just look and do a check. Okay, out of these five, here's what progress reports are because we literally do. We have people. Spread between here and Terre Haute and Bogota. Um, both programs for men and for women. So there's a lot going on. We have. Pretty much daily contact for Chad Smith and Samantha Davis, who are the peers who are working with us. From RISE, uh, we see them often. I know Jade Hacey been often in jail. They do a lot of work down there. I would say that when I looked at the spreadsheet, because. You look at it and you start looking in terms of numbers. As to what percentages are in this type of program or what percentages have passed X amount of drug tests and all of those things. Really, the most impressive thing has been that you can look at. Numerous of these folks that we've known for years. And particularly myself and Jason, been dealing with people with substance abuse issues for years. And you can, as soon as they walk up to the door, realize that they've made possible changes uh, from the look on their face. Uh, they gained weight in so many ways. In fact, I told the one person in particular within the last two weeks that I saw. It's almost as if he's reversed his aging process. And for all of us, you know, the, the best you can do is slow it down, right? But we actually seen people that look, look younger. Uh, obviously healthier. So the success so far has been beyond what I even imagined. And I say that cautiously because it is a marathon, not sprint. So that's what I would say as to how the day-to-day logistics of the program are going. Uh, funding is the other issue. And we knew we were going to be able to get a lot of help from the opioid funding stream. And I appreciate everyone's help in doing that. That got us through the end of July next year. To fund the peer program that we have right now. So we have been on search for other funding streams to bridge that gap between the end of next year. Basically from August through December. Um, good news on that front, um, there's a being for others grant. It's a great program. Uh, that's associated when Jasper Moore Hospital was sold. Uh, we had a grant application out to help assist us with funding rise. And they have given us a $10,000 grant. Um, so I expected the next meeting, we're gonna give it to Christie and see what we have to do. Judy's already. Uh, given some input on that as to trying to make sure we get signatures, um, appropriate signatures and get that file back with them so that money is available. Help us toward the end of next year, but we still have work to do on the fiscal side and there's still a lot of data management.
Okay, well, thank you.
Have questions?
Congratulations to her on including and making the same work, so we appreciate that.
Well, and that's, that's the other thing that, that I have really been overwhelmed with from commissioners, the council, law enforcement. Um, I mean, the. Seed of community, the support has been for better rehabilitation and recovery. It's been outstanding. And, and that's so encouraging because it would be so easy for people to, you know, just turn their nose up, say, we don't need to do things differently. But people have been so good about that. So I really appreciate that.
Okay, well, thank you for sharing. Thanks for coming in.
Just an hour. It's not showing here, but it is long.
Okay, good. All right, moving on, uh, the grand double time handbook update. You want to talk a little bit about that?
Yeah, um, so due to the sheriff's grant and them paying double time on that grant, our handbook only says comp time or time and a half. Judy had requested a change in there just so we didn't look like we were going against policy. Um, and I had sent two different options, um. I believe. You, Val, uh, liked the exception. And that possibly putting in the words double time in there as well as. Just the exception, but that way it, it notes that we, under no circumstances will overtime compensation beyond where I said a rate less. Less than legally required, but any exception to the standard overtime compensation structure. After receiving prior approval from the board can be allowed, so. It would just be a, a clause that we would add to the handbook.
Any questions on that? All right, you'll have a motion to revise the little section on overtime. For the, I say it, I'll say it. And thank you. All right, uh, Natalie, you want to talk to us a little bit about how this. This grant?
Well, pretty much we've been trying to figure out a way, um. To write it up where with the 20 hours a week that are worked. We kind of, we've been working with Val. What if we just put that into our job description? The emergency preparedness duties. Which would be included in my job description and then Amanda's.
Yeah, uh, Natalie had come up with an informal agreement that wasn't gonna work to some. Health department is just, they're straight to base, it's not. So I read, uh, state. They really don't care what we do as long as we got somebody assigned for that position. So I suggested what we do is, is that the health department. Add to Natalie and Landon's job descriptions. That position, uh, under the grant. And there's no question that, that, you know, you're gonna be available more than minimum 20 hours. We, you may not work it, but no, neither was anybody else. And since you're not paying anything out of the grant for wages. I think as long as we modify their job, they, the health department modifies their job description. There will be supplies for that contract and the state. They don't really care. We've got somebody there that's available for that position.
Okay, great.
I have a motion to go ahead and amend this plan, uh, while it's been submission. I second all fair say. Thank you. I think a couple of people have come in, uh, RC, we don't, we don't, we're not gonna have a solubles meeting, so after this meeting, so just. Uh, just for your notice, you're welcome to stay. All right, moving on to, uh, new business, family health center update.
Well, did you guys have a copy of the report? All right. Uh, well, thank you for having me. My name is Jennifer Emmons. I'm the CEO of the Family Health Center and we are your designated communal mental health center here in Pike County. So every year I need to come and give you just a few statistics, um, mandated by the state. I'm not gonna read this whole thing to you. I wanted to tell you a little bit about some, um, of our crisis services. So just a short recap in state fiscal year, um, twenty twenty-five, we served seven hundred and eight unique, um, patients from Pike County. And did just under twenty-two hundred therapy encounters. Um, but what I really wanted to share with you today is our crisis center, um, twenty-four seven crisis unit is now fully, um, open and operational. Um, that is a three-pronged process. It's someone to call, which, uh, we are connected with nine eight eight in the state of Indiana. So we have twenty-four seven crisis, um. Staff on, um, staff twenty-four seven to answer crisis calls. Um, we also have someone to respond, so we have staff mobile crisis teams that's ready to respond to a scene. It's very similar to what ambulance would respond to a medical emergency. And then we have a safe place to go. So we have our crisis stabilization unit that's open in Vincent's. Um, we can come to Pike County. We've been in Pike County, um, picked up individuals, brought them back to the unit. And they can stay up to twenty-three hours. We get them connected with the resources. Um, get them an initial evaluation completed and then we can return them back to the community. Or if they need a higher level of care, but our main purpose is to divert from jails and to divert from emergency rooms. Um, so that is up and going. Um, a few other things that we have, um, our prevention team is working hard out in the community to have done some school programs. And then along with our crisis, we're really looking just to keep in building relationships with our first responders. Um, we really want the first responders in Pike County to, if it's a mental health crisis. To be, oh, we need to call the Green Door Center in Vincent's because they can help us rather than transporting to jail or an emergency room. So happy to answer any questions you have, um, in the report.
How do people know where to call?
We have blasted a lot of numbers everywhere. It's on our website. Um, if they call nine eight eight and they need to be, now, a lot of times when you call nine eight eight. That operator is going to handle your crisis phone call, but then if they need to deploy, then they call us and we're connected with.
Ever relationship or? We do not get it, but I have some questions. What kind of response time do you have?
Me, it'll be up to sixteen minutes. It really depends on if our mobile. Normally, if they're in Vincent's, you're again within thirty-five, how, how we can drive it, see.
Because I think we need to have EMS with these types of expressions on that because. A sixteen minute response time is not, that, that's something we can. But it depends on the situation. For the school board, they're here too.
Correct.
So yeah, we get. Okay, well, I had to ask the questions because I didn't know, don't know anything about the number. I have never seen the number or anything like that, so that's why I'm asking, so. Hope I never have to call.
Correct, yep.
All right.
All right, thank you. All right.
Okay, uh, opening bid for this husband?
Which page six?
It's literally the sixth page. They number him on.
Remember page six, you didn't even. One hundred seventy-four thousand nine hundred dollars. Broken down in phases.
Okay, in villages, okay. And the decision that's meeting. All right, moving on, we have a MS, MS additional transfers. So the additional is, um. Appropriation for community foundation grant that we received, appropriating the money to the credit line to be able to spend. Go ahead and get the additional away. Uh, I've got a motion, any questions? Got a motion to take this additional public, I say it, I'll say it. Pay your transfers. Um, the. Paper ones, um. I think I told you last meeting, we had a basic EMT who's asking for medically, you do apparently fine. And this is just to shore up. Till the end of the year, uh, we had excess in basic EMT. And, uh. We moved a little bit of buffer into each one so that if we have any issues between now and. The end of the year, we should be able to cover them with what we have. Uh, the other ones are. To finish up the Arthur stuff, making sure that, um. The money is in the correct line for payment. And then I did ask to move some money. To be able to purchase radios for the ambulance that we have currently being reunited. Uh, because we won't have radios for it when it comes to that. Having MA additional.
Yes, we were also awarded the community foundation, uh, grant, um. It'll be for inflatable rescue boat, um, that will be kept at Jefferson Township. Uh, so when, uh, two fifty-seven floods, so we can rapid deploy that over there. Uh, appropriation was for eighty-three, fifteen, eighty. This would be entire award.
Got a motion and said, I say it, I'll say it.
Good morning. Um, I think you guys should have the contract and. Uh, what they sent me after the fact, after, um, Christie already had to have your paperwork in was the cost revenue report. Uh, so far for twenty twenty-five and then some additional information, um. Currently, we are setting at two thousand forty-three documents starting today. And I received this five-year. Contract from Fiddler. And in the beginning, I think you had the emails. They were wanting, since we did our, um, big indexing projects the last two years. It put us over the minimal. Gigabyte. Range for basically saving. All of our information because now we are up at two, um, over sixty gigabytes. Because we have so many more documents that they Bastian saves for us. So in the. In the five-year contract, always before Bastion. Which is basically the host for saving our documents. Was included in our per document price. They were wanting to take my per document price down from four seventy-seven to three fifty. But then charge us eighty-eight hundred dollars a year to save our documents. Well, of course, the feisty Misty and me immediately. Like come back at him, like, how do I justify eighty-eight hundred dollars a year when it's always been included? You know, I can't afford eighty-eight hundred dollars a year. So he came back with, um. For the first year of this five-year contract, keeping my per document fee of four seventy-seven the same. And over the next two to five years, increasing it to five dollars a document. And locking in an extra. Four fifty a quarter to offset the gross of our image repository. So four fifty. A quarter instead of eighty-eight hundred. So basically, um, I think if I did my calculations right. Um, they were gonna charge us like, the difference would have been about five thousand dollars. So. This is much better than the original. Amount of money that they were gonna charge us extra, which, and I don't know if it's because. You know, bigger counties or whatever, but I said, you know, looking at our cost revenue, that's a big chunk of money for our little county. And I had mentioned. Checking with our IT to see what the difference would be as far as. The cost to save our images. Well. You know, they like to keep everything together, so they came back with this contract. So I. Didn't know if you guys want time to look over it and we talk about about it or go ahead and go with it.
I like the battle.
What? Oh, you haven't seen.
So the contract is gonna be.
This one, yeah, we always sign a contract, but, um, this is the first time they have. Um, asked me to basically. Pay Bastion the repository separately because of our increase in all the documents that. The skinny project increased by. So.
Just renewing your new one, new rates.
Yes, yeah, for five, yes, for five years, yeah.
It's the basic place of just a rate change.
Rate change, yeah, which, I mean, we always sign the contract, but this, this rate change was significant compared to what we have.
Yeah.
Had in the past. But I can definitely. Justify four fifty a quarter.
You have a choice.
I don't. That's what I told him. I go, so basically if you're from Indiana and right now you're Center Point customer. You don't have a choice. So I said, basically, I don't have a choice. Except to try to fight to get it lowered.
Right.
And that's what I've been trying to do, so.
The primary change was the four fifty?
The four fifty a quarter, yeah. So. They wanted, well, it's gonna be an extra eighty, a hundred dollars. So I'm thinking it's gonna save us at lea- at least over around five thousand, I think. The microwaving. Changed a few pennies. I think it was like. Three hundreds or something, or three. Uh, micro filming went up a little bit and then, like I said, from in year two to five, they're gonna increase the document fee. But that still isn't nothing near what they were gonna charge.
And as far as the services listed here, they're the same as where they were.
Yeah, they were all the same.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, Indiana only has really two, two companies to go with. So.
Okay, so as you're saying, basically, you don't have a choice.
I don't really have a choice, but I do want you to know that I tried to fight to get it down.
Okay. Uh, any questions? Can I have a motion, uh, to make the changes? Of the price. I say it, I'll say it.
So I'm free to go ahead and sign it and get it sent in. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. That's all of this business, this is by commissioners for house transfer. The cover of the water bill.
Yes.
Sure, water, and I did this not too awfully long ago and thought I had it, but. I'm a submit to doctor later because I'm still to be sure for this.
Any questions to the, to have a motion accept this transfer? I say, I'll say I. And we have some appointments, region fifteen appointments.
Yeah, they have a meeting in January, so they always ask these to be done earlier than what we do. Um, currently, region fifteen is Jeff Nelson, Jeff Hardy, Ryan Coleman. Um, I don't have any changes unless you guys do.
Did you talk to Jeff?
I did not get a hold of him, um. Thought I had his cell phone number, but I don't.
He'll be okay. He comes, he comes up a meeting, I'm sure. You good?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, do I have a motion to reappoint the three for region fifteen? I second, I'll say it. Cross ordinance.
I didn't make any changes to this. It's just updating the dates.
January first, twenty-sixth to March thirty-first, twenty-sixth.
Correct.
That doesn't, doesn't change our. That number four.
Twenty-one.
Twenty-one, yeah. Or this number twenty, twenty-five, twenty-one. Got a motion except, I second, I'll say it. Bond approvals.
And so the council approves doing the, um, schedule bond and the public employee blanket bond as well as the amounts. And then you guys approve the actual bonds themselves. Since the Hill Group went with Cincinnati Live, it goes straight to the. Uh, public officials. So I do have misties as an example. Um, that's what they're all gonna be like, so I just need you guys to go ahead and approve them so they can be signed in those.
Any questions? Got a motion to go ahead and accept the bond? I say it, I'll say it.
All right, Doc. Uh, did have a conversation with the step of the leave on, they get sent a check. So, uh, since I was in the bonds and everything, they, they are asking for the bonds to be released. So.
This, this check is for county rules.
At one point four million is what they said.
And you're gonna start that next frame?
Yes, that will be right out of the gate next frame, so. Um, he's preparing letter now as we speak, so hopefully. Uh, by next meeting, they'll to have a check and release their bonds, so we can. Go ahead and start some of the work out there too. So.
I think Judy, you said last meeting, you have that as a separate fine item.
And say a separate fund. It's economic development fund, which is part of the economic development project, which approves infrastructure.
Yep, so we can use it. Yep, so we can use it. Val got the letter typed up too for Spurgeon also. So that will have to be approved by the council and commissioners. For us to be able to do their work, I suppose, so.
So you wanna approve that next meeting?
Yeah, absolutely.
We'll do it next, we'll do it next week.
Yeah, it's fine, we can do it. That's fine.
And that's good for two years, good for two years, okay.
And we've been having the guys work on some of the findings with the, with the bridges, so that's what we're working on. Today, we're getting ready for the. That's it.
Chris?
I did that bid request for ambulances. We talked about that a few minutes ago, that they should be. For December. Other than that.
Are you shipping them, it's all right?
Yes. Today we're not, now, so.
Anything else running?
All I got is, I talked about what it's. Meeting was the juvenile issue we're having right now for the. Transports and placements. I don't know where this is gonna keep going to, but right now we're struggling trying to keep up with. With our juvenile issues. Our day is a bit, kind of figure out our best way to handle that, but. Right now, we've got our kids in. Mission Waco to Franklin County to Clark County to. Trying to think where, where you know, we sent another all this weekend. We're, we're struggling trying to keep placements and a place for juveniles. There.
We, we thought the youth village was coming back to vengeance. And there appears to be minimal progress on that. Actually, you went by there the other day, it looks about like it did when they closed. And they had given us an October date. The problem that we're in right now is that it's extremely uncomfortable. Because we don't have placement guaranteed, if someone's under the age of eighteen, they literally can hold up the bank, and I can't promise you that we're gonna have facility that's going to accept. That's what we ran into with the three youths from Evansville. Easter weekend with a burning cart, Swifty Lied, who were running through the neighborhoods, forty five caliber pistol and the ski masks. Literally, plant Craig called, I was sitting on my porch so he could sell reception, and he literally was calling place after place after place, calling me back. And I don't know, we had eleven, twelve places all over the state called, and no one would accept any, any of the two juveniles. So we literally dusted them off. Got their parents and wished them happy Easter, and it was, I mean. It was one of the worst days of my prosecutorial career. Because when you release them, you have no idea if they're gonna grab the next gun and go back and stick it in somebody's face or hurt somebody's. Grandma or grandpa or do whatever, it's just so absurd. And a year and a half later, I don't know that we're any better than we were, we thought the youth village might actually help it. We've tried to contact Indianapolis, we get stupid answers, problems like, well, the people in Indianapolis don't pay attention. Well, the people in Pine County do. If it means that you're not gonna get robbed at gunpoint, or you're not gonna get your house broken, we've had other situations, there were youths from Henderson who were breaking into cars. Stealing things, we had to release them too, because we couldn't get anywhere with the kids, this is not acceptable. I don't wanna be here the day we get up in the morning and we have to let a kid go, and they end up breaking back into the house and hurting or killing someone. I just don't want that, so we gotta have a solution, so. We have one of these instances where we didn't get a kid placed, and he was threatening to hurt, kill people, and we had uncomfortably write out the twenty four hours till we. We could get something going with the court system. So I asked you to be available, we sat down and talked about it, Jason's talked about it. And put it on the justice, the J RAC committee. And what I've asked for, I hate committees, but I've asked for a committee that I'm willing to be part of, and where we're gonna study all the possible options to make sure, because there's two problems. First problem is being able to detain juvenile whenever they do something dangerous. And as opposed to twenty years ago, when we might have two or four juveniles, we're dealing with any given time, and twenty twenty five, we now have thirty, thirty five, we're dealing with any one time. So the problems just keep getting worse, you need to be able to detain them to stop whatever danger is, that's probably the biggest issue, and then the second problem is all these placements JK has to struggle with trying to. To get to the very northern end of the state for therapy or, or whatever placement that we can actually get long term, because the services that are being offered. To a lot of these kids, it's not like they wanna smoke a joint or have beer on a weekend or, or won't go to school, these kids want to hurt, kill people a lot of. So we're not comfortable just treating this with slap on the hand, and I hope the committee, the purpose of the committee would be to put all available options. Whatever they are. Whether it's coming up with what would a contract with Vanderburg County be like, and would they guarantee us that we could place the dangerous juvenile? What would it look like? Not that we're speaking for anything, presented to council and commissioners. Whether it's coming up with building some type of place that JK can meet the requirements of state to house the juveniles whenever we have a dangerous situation. Whether it's finding a facility, maybe someone's not thought about, but we need to maintain a relationship with. But if we don't get the ball rolling, where we're starting to talk about these issues, I'm worried we're gonna wake up one morning, something awful's gonna happen, and it's just. Going to be totally avoidable if we can get ahead of things, and that's what I hope happens.
I like this, but this, this means a lot, I've got two overnight stays. Each, one juvenile's gonna take up three days. My time. I've got another juvenile that's gonna take a overnight trip with another. For another deputy, and then I've got another deputy, so I have to go make a three hour trip one way, you know, that's all, that's all coming up in the next day and a half.
So you bring them back here for court?
Yeah.
Does everybody have, just questions, does everybody have to be here in person for court, or is it video conference, it doesn't work, or how's this?
The courthouse internet has, I hate to bring it up, because I know it's been bad. The courthouse internet has been unreliable, but even when we can do some things, they have to be here. Depending on nature of the proceeding, so. Sometimes we've gotta go get them no matter what, on other occasions where we can try to use them or something like that, particularly because we have all of these internet problems, it's been so unreliable that it's practically unworkable. So we try to troubleshoot, you're constantly trying to troubleshoot in advance. Just trying to anticipate what all the issues are, there's just so many unknowns, because like I said, we're not getting a lot of support from the state. In fact, we're really not getting any support from the state, there are no help whatsoever. So we got to come up with ways to keep our state. And still go by all these rules that they put on top of you, and then we have the other problem is that the society's in outright decline, and the morals are terrible, and discipline's awful, and parents. It's hard to do it, absolutely, that was the job. And that's just the truth. And so the things the kids are seeing in these homes that created the trauma and abuse and the cycle that happens is so much worse than it was. Fifteen, twenty years ago, I'm in the awful position of being able to remember twenty three years ago when you actually just dealt with problems straight up and the answers made sense. In twenty twenty five, a lot of times, the answers don't make sense.
Okay. How before, we do. Okay. Val, did you have anything? Christian?
I've received two of the solid waste leases back, you guys have already approved them, I just need signatures.
Any, anything changed on the? That's funny.
Yeah, we're just trucking along.
This is by publics?
Or by Keenan, I slipped the commissioners now, I've dealt with several complaints from the folks in, on the fifty seven. Cart Road Solar Project. Just can't wait till the project gets done, continuing to have problems with the solar trucks running through people's yards. As we know, we've talked about before, this has just been a learning experience, kind of a bad experience while we're trying to get all of this stuff done. Do you know, is the Cato project coming and? If it, if it is, JK and I are concerned, we wanna make sure we have a chance to get on top of it, and make sure that we can get trucks in and out as safely as possible. You know, as we see these problems come, because a lot of times logistics and these things are really, really hard to manage.
I think the assumption is yes, it's kind of. We, Josh and I had a conversation, what, a month ago maybe? And the discussion was basically not started until March or April, after, after winter, we don't work on the roads during winter, eh? They were just gonna do some test pilings. About eight pilings maybe, I think some tests. That was gonna take a couple, three weeks maybe, something like that. But we asked them not to start until April or sometime for that. Now, how when they're actually gonna start? And if they're still gonna start. Don't, I don't know, I don't know, I'm suing sometime next year as far as pass, I mean, pass the test pilots, pass that. So I really don't have a great answer, the assumption is yes, so.
Is there a roadway agreement or is it a place?
There is, we signed an agreement that there's no roads, it's been decided for us which roads to use, we. You know, commissioners have discussed doing a circumference of roads, we. We make comments that we want them to build their own roads. Josh pointed that out very plainly, as I did when we were talking to them, Josh has one road that they like, that we wanted to use, but we want them to use their own roads as well. You wanna talk a little bit more about that?
I mean, we can't, as far as the road, you know, what we thought about was bringing them in by, by way of. On that rock road, keeping them off the Cato out there, there may be a crossing, there may be crossings on the Cato out there. But also too, you go to the Woods on Cato Road, they're also there too.
Okay.
So I don't know. What will take place, but everyone there is a participant pretty well on both of those roads.
So ideally, they need to build their own roads.
Right, so we want. That would be, you know, JK and I have talked about it, with the S curves on the, on the O'Jears Road and some of the other things, now that we kinda know better what to expect. Yeah, I think you avoid those things, it'd be much safer.
A hundred percent, so.
Yeah, I think that. With us discussing, I mean, like Jeff said, I think, I think they'll need to build their own roads. And honestly, I think they would probably be minded, you know, I mean. For what they gotta fix, and driving through people's yards, and fifty seven, now here it is, starting to wind down, so they're starting to get stuff. Up on circuit, so, I mean, they, they're not running, they're employees of what they have, I don't know about, they're picking up equipment. All the stuff out, I'm sure, yeah, their stunt that's still going on. So. I do know that they try to resolve everything unless there's a new one that I don't know about. But there was check wrote for. For them using their yards or driving off in their yards, and some of it was pretty, pretty substantial. So I don't know, if there's a new person and they've got a complaint, be glad to work on them.
That was the way it was related to the check I'm at.
Okay.
You were talking about car road.
Yeah, car roads. Two hundred, two fifty, all the way down to there, you know, the side roads, so. But they are starting to wind down.
All right, anything else? This is my question. All right, you have a motion to adjourn, I second, I'm afraid to say I, we do have a meeting right after this. We'll get started as soon as possible.